Come on up. We just had a discussion on the Lander Building.
It looked like it was later on in the agenda, so I thought that...
The agenda's at nine fifteen when it starts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You'll learn.
Yeah.
We'll give you a pass this time. So what we just did is made a motion to sell the Lander Building.
Okay.
With the stipulation that we find out where we could do the drug testing.
Okay.
I'm just looking at the report that's here. I just had one question. It says that the courthouse is not an option dash security. What would be security? What's the problem?
Well, they would be coming in at six o'clock or six thirty.
Six o'clock.
And so we'd have to have court marshals in the building to secure it. And then we'd have to have the parking for them to be there. And they would use the public restroom from six thirty to eleven. And so if they did that, then we would have just not everyone... All the persons that do drug testing are high-risk individuals. And so they would just be interacting, mingling in the hallway, congesting the hallway. And so we felt that that would cause some security or...
What are the hours you guys do it in the morning?
It's six thirty to eleven. And then it's every day of the year, potentially.
Right, right.
So it's usually three to four times a week.
Between six thirty and eleven, yeah.
Okay. That'll give us some options to look at and some things to talk about then.
Okay.
I figured the courthouse was our most secure building in the county.
Yeah, it is.
So security is an excuse. I just go, "Okay, I don't..."
We just have to have them come in earlier, court marshals to come in earlier. And then just over there, you know, we don't have the general public in that building. And so they just come in, they go out one door, and they come out another. This would mean that we'd have to clear them from six thirty to eleven. And it would be a hundred and up to 111 people additional security clearances a day.
So what do you feel it saves the county or costs the county to utilize that building and not some other building?
So I know that the cost for the Lander Building is high. We do have some money that we could contribute to. Like if we enter into the rent over at City Center, then we're going to... We have to enter into a five-year lease. We have to have up from building costs. And so we would... It would enter us into a large thing. And we'd be looking at, you know, between the fifteen to thirty thousand dollars. So it might be better just to have thirty thousand dollars. Just it'd be better for them to find their own location. But if we could contribute to the Lander Building as far as upkeep, if we were able to work on a number for that, then we would be able to look towards that. And each year, this year, we have a ten thousand dollar increase in testing funds. And next year, we'll have another increase. I don't know what it is. But then in 2026, we'll have a large one if everything gets approved. And so we're thinking we can cover things in the future, just not short term. And then we just have other... Our drug court coordinators are temporarily in D six. We were going to come before the commission to talk about them moving into the annex building behind the probation department. But now the public defender... Conflict Public Defender Office space is there. And so we'd just be looking at multiple rental spots if we lose Lander. It would also increase the cost for the public. We do do about eighty-six thousand dollars for co-pay, which is the individuals that are on pre-trial court services. And they pay for that. As the costs go up, more of them are requesting indigent funds to pay for their testing. And so that price may also increase with that as a cost.
Dan, come back up here, please. So the Lander Building doesn't meet our standards. And so we're concerned about investing hundreds of thousands of dollars back into that building to bring it up to where it needs to be. Dan, you want to speak to that?
Sure. So we've got a failing foundation. We've got failing utilities under the building. We've got failing utilities out under the parking lot, settling in the walls. We need a new roof. And the three rooftop units need replaced. So literally, if you're going to make that up to our standard, we'd have to tear it down and start over. When we looked at building on that lot before, the city wanted a different layout of how we would use that lot. We'd have to set back away from the housing next to it. And then they wanted us to use the alleyway as the entrance and exit. And then you have to have a certain amount of parking spots depending on the size of the building. So your hands are tied on that lot to rebuild on it. It's almost impossible to give the city everything they want on that lot. So that was just my suggestion. Let's just get rid of it.
And as far as the timeframe to get rid of it?
And we want to do it as quick as possible, but we also realize the constraints that are here. And so that's why this would become a priority. And then for the coordinators, isn't there still a couple of rooms behind probation over here?
There's a couple of large offices and a conference room. It also houses the employee's restroom. So I think if that... The rear of that building became the testing spot, we probably...
Not as a testing spot for the coordinator?
Oh, okay.
I walked over there yesterday. I didn't see the offices. I saw that the sheriff's department had two storage. And then there is a conference room and then... But that they use. But we could possibly temporarily use that. Once the remodel here is done, we'll have office space for the coordinators. And we're just waiting on that to be able to get done and have a temporary spot for them.
Well, I've noticed that we've had people that claim rooms that they weren't authorized to claim. So that's why I'm asking part of these questions.
I think I'm talking about the very back. We have Katerina back there.
Yeah.
And then there's an empty one and an empty conference room.
Yeah, the... When I talked to Katerina, she said that we could put them both in that empty office. But they... But she told me that was reserved for if the conflict public defender was hired. If that's not reserved, then we could put them in there no problem. And they could share that. The office space is big enough that they could share that.
Okay. And that's a discussion that we're going to end up having because we haven't hired a conflict public defender. And so that may or may not ever happen before it goes over to the state. So...
How much space do you need for the drug testing?
We need a foyer. And then we need two to three bathrooms.
So again, how much space? Five hundred, six hundred feet, eight hundred square feet?
Probably eight hundred square feet. I have... Carrie met with the behavior health... The point of trust. And they do have the space for us to be able to do that at fifteen dollars a square foot. But it would be the five-year spot. But if we could make it work, all they need is a small foyer to be able to welcome people in. The nice thing about the Lander Building is they could come in one door and go out another door. So they're not mingling with each other, which also causes some high-risk situations. And there's juveniles, so they can quickly move out as well. And so those are all the things we kind of have to consider. We looked at different buildings, but with the juvenile and adult mixture, some of the partners, it wouldn't be a good fit because of the juvenile population that is there from six thirty to seven.
Well, we are going to move forward with getting rid of the Lander Building. I mean, that's... We're not going to invest a couple hundred thousand dollars into that. Like he says, it'd be cheaper to tear it down. And we have other place we could put a building if we're going to tear it down. I mean, we're not going to fight the restrictions of the city either. So in the long run, short run, whatever, we're going to get rid of that building. So we have to get on it and figure out a place we can do the drug testing.
One other little thing to consider is snow removal, too. Those guys get in so early, it's pretty tough to do any snow removal. Lander, they're there early. So if we were ever to move to the annex, it kind of creates a problem.
We still have problems with neighbors parking in the parking lot and stuff, too, for snow removal.
It's tough moving the county cars out of the way enough to plow the annex. So to add all those cars, it'd be difficult.
Okay, we'll work with you and we'll figure out something, but...
Yeah, we'll start moving forward. As far as the office space for the coordinators, is that something I need to put a request in now? Or is that something I can move forward with out of this meeting?
You can put a request in so we can have a conversation about it. We can go and look. And everybody's on the same page of what's being used by who. And because like I say, it may end up that we decide to pull the conflict that are county employees and just move forward, waiting for the state because we haven't had success for six months already. So it's a conversation piece that we got to have all together and decide where we can put people.
Perfect. Put in that agenda request.
All right. Well, thank you.
Sorry for being late. Misread the agenda.
We just moved along fairly quick.
Okay.
Generally.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the discussion about ARPA funds. Do you have some paperwork, Kristy?
I believe Brayden sent the list of projects to the board. This just summarized it. And then allows... Well, this summarized it. So what I did is, for example, you've got the assessor. The document that Brayden sent shows that they want to do the HVAC, the D and B counter, lighting, fire suppression, paint, and restrooms and annex. There's an estimated cost of seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty thousand. We already have budgeted and approved through ARPA funds, three hundred and ten thousand. So then what I did, if you don't see, like on the next item, there's ambulance. And then the description says ambulance and alerting system, budget a million dollars. I don't have that already approved in the formal budget process, so there's nothing there. And then we've got fairgrounds. I think I read it correctly. It was a little dark in the scan. Says office project and then something about bathrooms. There was no requested dollar amount. There's the event center to move the indoor arena. There was no dollar amount put down. Camera system for the event center wellness complex, a hundred thousand, no budget, has been approved yet. The corner, a cooler and parking area, the amount was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. A hundred's already been approved in ARPA. Maintenance has a new boiler for three hundred and fifty thousand, no budget, already approved. The east entrance remodel, six hundred and fifty thousand, no budget approved. Historical museum, a restroom refresh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There was fifteen thousand dollars already approved in ARPA funds. Ag extension, new carpet, paint inside and out, fifty thousand, no money budgeted already. Planning, I added GIS because they should be building. A new roof and facade, three hundred thousand, nothing budgeted currently or nothing approved. Maintenance, jury room, bathroom in room two eighteen, twenty thousand, nothing approved currently. HR suite and training room, budget says eighty thousand. We have sixty-one thousand, but that was budgeted in capital acquisitions. Juvenile probation has restrooms, roof, gutters, and parking lot, two hundred and thirty thousand, nothing currently approved. That needs to be clarified because if that is the juvenile detention center, then that cost needs to be split out between juvenile detention and juvenile probation. The joint district needs to share in that cost of the facility. That's how we've always done it.
So Dan, is that probation over here?
What projects for the roof?
Juvenile probation, restrooms, roof, gutters, and parking lot.
I don't know how you would divide the roof between the two.
A percentage.
I would say...
Is how we did it before.
That metal roof is on the probation side, so you can divide that out however you think. And then you get bathrooms on the probation side.
Okay.
And gutters are all the way around, so it'd be half and half.
Okay. Okay. So we would just need to break out costs for each item and then know what was going to be what. But ARPA shouldn't cover the... It can cover county side, but not the joint district side unless we ask for reimbursement. Let's not do that through ARPA.
Yeah.
Rotten Bridge roof, five hundred thousand, not currently approved in a budget. The sheriff has a whole list of items, some within the budget. So we've got wet cells, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, a hundred's already approved. Polish cement, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nothing approved yet. Showers, two hundred and eighty-five, twenties approved. Digital intercom install, one point one million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand's been approved. Landscaping, ninety-seven thousand, three twenty-five, nothing approved yet. Paved parking lot, there was no dollar amount. Two... Oh, I missed it. Two deputy stations in D and E pods, twenty-nine thousand, seventeen's already approved. New emergency generator, three hundred thousand, nothing approved. ADA doors in the lobby and driver's license, twenty-two thousand, that's already approved. Additional emergency power panels, sixteen thousand, nothing approved yet. Air handlers, four of them, for a hundred and forty thousand, nothing approved. Booking shower, twenty thousand, that's already approved. Stucco, twenty-five hundred, that's already approved. Walk-in freezer upgrade, sixteen thousand, nothing approved. Surtanescu building and temporary boiler room, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, nothing approved yet. So the total ask is seven million, one seventy-two, eight twenty-five. Already budgeted in one or two different apartments is a million, ninety-two... A million, ninety-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That leaves six million, eighty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars unfunded currently, based on all the asks. We have four million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, four fifty-seven dollars in unobligated ARPA dollars remaining. So what I did on this sheet was just put a priority column, and then we can go through.
So unobligated, but is it free to spend wherever and/or...
No.
How we... Okay.
So...
Out of that, four million?
One million, one million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars needs to fall within an expenditure category.
What was that in the margins?
One million, two twenty-three, one seventy-five. Sorry, I should have put this on here.
No, that's...
I did this spreadsheet this morning because I didn't see the email yesterday.
And I interrupted you this morning, so I appreciate it.
So within those expenditure categories, I feel like tentatively, because I need to meet with Brian on these, I think the HVAC units would fall within those approved expenditure categories because it would provide for clean air. We used original ARPA money to do the HVAC clean unit. So I think that's why that would fall in. So we've got the HVAC unit in the assessor's office, the air handlers in the sheriff's budget that we could probably fit in those categories. We already have, without meeting with Brian, if there's some projects that would allow spacing, six feet or more, so some of the showers, the projects that we talked about, the wet cells, we thought some of those items...
I think the wet cells that fall under that.
Would fall under that category.
Give them an individual...
Yeah. And so there might be some new items within the sheriff's budget that we could add that would fall in the expenditure categories. So as we go through these, some of these items, I have the breakout of individual parts, but I don't have them on all of them. So I don't... We would need that in order to determine how much could fall within that expenditure category and then what the rest of the two point two million dollars would just be general government.
Just to clarify, you and I met earlier in the ambulance and alerting system. You felt like we had some reserves that could cover that potentially?
I think potentially the ambulance district could cover that.
The whole thing?
The majority of it?
Well, we already have five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars budgeted this year that could absorb some parts because I'm not sure what we're going to spend that money on. We have an ambulance and some equipment. But this year, I think we could absorb some of it. And I think the alerting system was a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Right, for the two stations.
And then the ambulance...
And the alerting system that is here is not the one that Pocatello's talking to us about. It's an alerting system for Chubbick and McCammon, just to be clear on that.
And so I don't know that even the budget for this would be a million. I don't know what's all included in this. If it's one ambulance...
I had nine hundred thousand for two ambulances.
Okay, two ambulances.
And the alerting. Two ambulances outfitted and the alerting system.
Okay. So that would be equipment, power cut loaders and that kind of stuff, too?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're... That's probably like a two-year project to do all of that?
Well, okay. Before we start talking allocating monies, there's a couple of items we need to quickly clarify. So let me look first at how much we think we can absorb within the ambulance.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is if we can just pull that off the table to begin with, that makes some other decisions.
It's a million dollars.
Right.
So we only have six hundred grand to go?
Well, while we're talking about some of this stuff, after going out to jail yesterday, seeing that boiler and that system, we need to change ours out here.
Absolutely.
That become a priority to me.
That was cool.
Yesterday, after seeing that and seeing how that... We have both systems on both sides. If we lose heat in this building and we shut this building down, that become a priority for me yesterday.
I agree.
Throw that out there.
Is that what this number is here? Or is it... Make that number bigger in maintenance?
Well, I'm going to ask that question. Go ahead, Kristy.
So to backtrack on the ambulance, we have one point eight million dollars in excess reserves. We budgeted to use six hundred and eighty-eight thousand of that. I would be extremely leery to use one million of the one point two left over.
Right.
Because then we don't have excess anymore. We don't have any...
Well, my question is...
So we could maybe use half that.
Can we do half this year and half next year to kind of plan on?
No, because I'm not anticipating building reserves next year. So I would say you could use five hundred thousand of reserves. But then I would be afraid to commit the other five hundred thousand, even until we know what this year's going to bring. If they use all their budget and the reserves, then that leaves us five hundred thousand in... We still have our operating reserves.
Yeah.
But not any in case of emergency money.
Right.
So that would be a thing.
If we could do the five hundred thousand, well, can I push it to six?
You can choose to do whatever you would like.
Because the six, I think, would get us at least the two ambulances.
Again, you can choose to do whatever you like. You have my recommendation.
Well, I will take your recommendation and knock that one million down to five hundred thousand. And that's a soft ask, given what we're trying to work with the ambulance district right now. So that's a soft ask. I wouldn't rank that as a high priority. How's that?
That's good.
One more quick discussion before we start prioritizing. Any monies you use through ARPA, they have to be spent by twelve thirty-one of twenty-six. And we have to have the costs incurred by twelve thirty-one of twenty-four. Next, any payment to someone over fifty thousand dollars, that vendor has to have a UEI, which is a unique entity identifier number. If we do not have that, there is a potential that we will get deemed for non-compliance. I don't know what that penalty, if there is one, if we get caught, I have to do that reporting. I don't know what that looks like at this point. So as we are going through the procurement, the buying, whatever it is, if we're paying a vendor more than fifty thousand dollars in aggregate, we have to have that number. I currently don't have that on this last reporting I did for a handful of vendors. My problem was mostly the concerts. You're not going to get that out of a concert promoter or a artist.
Okay.
So I am hoping that we can start using different monies for the concerts, like maybe cash forward or something.
Okay. So to move forward from here, projects that we've funded so far, right? So we have the concerts, the sewer at the wellness complex, the nine-one-one microwave system on the safety and assessment center, the McCammon fire station, the jail roof, and then the forensic pathology.
And I've got the forensic pathology at three point five million.
Three point five.
Just because it came in at three million, five fifteen.
Three point five, one.
So if you want me to change it to three million, five fifteen, I can.
No, three million, five, I'm committed.
And then one item that didn't make this sheet is the Sixth Street vacation. It kind of goes with the east entrance remodel. I just wanted to make sure that that was also on there. And Kristy didn't have a sheet for that one to throw in. But it's also been speculative numbers. We haven't had any hard costs or anything like that. We've just kind of run around three quarters of a million, depending on what the board wants to do with Sixth Street.
And I considered that the east entrance part of that, too.
So do we need to change that from six hundred and fifty thousand to mine four?
Seven fifty. No, I think seven... Seven fifty, I think, is what we had discussed for all of it. But I didn't know if that included the street and everything else, or if that was just the actual entrance to the building.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we clarified that.
Should we make that seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
Question for Dan. On the... Based on what you know from the boiler out at the jail, is that three fifty a reasonable number for the boiler to redo that system here?
Yeah, we need a backup boiler, so it'd be two boilers and the engineering to go along with it.
And that three fifty covers all of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I say, after seeing that one, I was impressed with that boiler.
So should we make that number one?
I think that's an easy...
A definite?
I think that's an easy one.
So from here, I'd like us to just take this paperwork. And we can have conversations with whoever we want to about their priorities. I'm not going to have everybody. Everybody's not here. And I'm not going to have everybody talk, "Well, this is my priority, my priority." But I'd like us to take this list now. We'll meet again in a week. And we'll set specifics of which one is our priorities and stuff. Because I don't want to just go back and forth right now and without having time to talk to people and think about this. Are you in agreement with that?
How about if I update the sheet to include five hundred thousand? I'll make the description on the ambulance and learning system for two ambulances. And then I'll change the dollar amount to five hundred thousand. And then on the boiler, I'll put for two boilers plus engineering. And then on the east entrance remodel, I'll include Sixth Street Vacation and change that dollar amount to seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that then you have the correct numbers at the bottom.
I'd like that.
Is that okay?
Give us the update.
That'd be great. And then you email us that?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll email it to the commission, Jason, Brayden, and Nancy.
Because I can just say that in talking to people about the forensic pathology building, we've had conversations about making that bigger, which would add to it. But when I was talking to Tony, he has some different ideas on evidence room and place. And so I need to have conversations with individuals a little bit more on the projects that are here, a little bit of one-on-one stuff. And then get their priorities so we can make their priorities our priorities as we come down and hit the list.
The only problem I foresee with some of this is we're going to need to... So say on the assessors, if you only choose to go with three of the items, not the six, we're going to need to get the costs of what those three are versus the six. gonna need to get the costs of what those three are versus the six, so that we know how much that's gonna cost to take away those.
And that's, that's as I talked to Dan and Anita. And get the cost and, and their priorities, and-
And please put paint in capital acquisitions.
Please do what?
Don't do any painting here through ARPA.
Sure, okay.
It's gonna be a nightmare to report. And it should be very minimal that we should be able to absorb with county dollars, whether it be capital acquisitions, or PILT, or something like that. We do have four hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the jail boiler project. Once that gets completed, we'll know if we're gonna need those dollars, or if we can reallocate those, so that we're not using capital acquisitions for all of the things that didn't fit in here, or something else, so that Dan still has some contingency money in case we have a project or an item that fails that he didn't anticipate during the budget process.
One thing that I thought was gonna be on here that's not, and I, and I would admit that it's probably a pretty low priority, is if we wanted to talk about if there is money to remodel up above and move the kids out of the jail, and put them in a better place for school, we're running out of space for storage in the elections office. And so if we could make a bet, like we talked about before, putting a better elevator in there, and maybe, I don't know to what extent, we would want to remodel that whole area upstairs, or if we want to do the breezeway across, like we had had that drawing done. But we have that information that we could throw on here, and I would recognize that that would even be one of my lower priorities off of this list, but it's still something I would still like to talk about if there is money and time, that we could, we could do that.
And Commissioner Moser, you mentioned the grandstands.
The grandstands.
And that's also on there.
Yep, grandstand should be on there.
The sheeting.
Yep.
We're having high school rodeo and all the other events in there. We gotta bring that up to snuff.
If I can get those two items, if someone can send me guestimates of dollar amounts, I can add that to this list before I send it out.
Okay. I'll get, I'll get to that, that I got from Dan before.
Do we have a number on the grandstands?
The sheeting on the grandstand seating?
The, the seating, I think the number to Dan, you, you send us one point five, you know, one point five dollars.
Okay, do you want me to add that?
Yeah, put that on there.
Okay. And I'll get this, this will be sent in an Excel format, so if you guys want to play around with numbers, you can. If you opt to, you'll just have to include it in, just where I have zeros in the already budgeted, or I can add a column. How about I add a column? And then, let me do that. And then that way you can put your priorities in there, and then you can come up to the dollar amount. I'll also throw in there the expenditure category requirement, or what we have to spend in there, so that it'll all be on this paper.
And I'd like to put on the list the, whatever the work is that needs to be done to get the Veterans Memorial Building up to speed. Just put it on the list.
Do you have a number for that?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Can you get me one?
Yeah.
If you, if I can get that information by five o'clock today, then I can get this sent out tomorrow.
Okay, I will. Yeah. I think I've got that number somewhere in my email. They just submitted their project request like a month later, and I'm earning it, giving permission, so I think I can find out.
Okay, perfect. Just let John know if you find it, and then that way, if you don't, you can let me know.
Brayden, did you say you have the number?
I'm looking for it. I think they had submitted it.
Great. Let me know if you got it up, so I don't start calling up people.
Anything else?
Send that out tomorrow.
Plan. All right, with that being said, it'll be at recess-